I call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 to order. Please join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting, aware that the meeting is being recorded for use on the internet in our local cable television. Are the assessors, oh, there's one coming in now, so where's the rest of them?
Downstairs.
Oh, we're gonna just open the meeting. Okay, I'll read that notice. Welcome everybody here. Town of West Bridgewater Public Hearing and Property Classification Policy pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 46, 56, Nash Gendler Law. Notice is hereby given. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. To consider the local property tax factors specifically of the issue of allocating local property tax levies among the five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property for fiscal year 2020. Interested parties are invited to be present and to be heard. Board of Selectmen, Ellen F. Marrera, Chairman. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
The second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Oh, he's just in time.
Just in time.
We just opened the hearing. Read all the notices. Welcome to Board of Assessors. How you doing, John?
Well, how are you?
Who you got with you?
The one and only.
One and only.
One and only. So who's gonna...
Good, how are you?
So who's gonna make the presentation here? Who's gonna be all the... Both of you?
Um, I am. It's gonna be a pleasure.
Can your name for the records here?
Steve McCarthy, Chair of Board of Assessors.
And who was beside you, into two seven?
Principal Assessor, John Donio.
And you have another assessor in the back there?
Yeah, Assessor Paul Abunker in the back.
Oh, welcome all here.
We have a staff member too?
Oh, Daniella Nelson, yeah.
Well, you better get her in there too.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so you've got the floor.
We're all set, okay. So we're here tonight on behalf of the tax classification hearing for the Town of West Bridgewater to hopefully set the tax rates tonight for the FY- FY '20 billing season. We have, we've gone through the process with John doing the work with the office, the office staff, very capable, Patriot Property, and with the blessings of the Department of Revenue, which is always, is always interesting. They actually, it went, it was good this year, things got accelerated, and we were happy, surprised that there was no really big holeups. All the years, sometimes it's problems, sometimes it's not. According to John, who's to be commended, things went pretty smoothly. So we haven't, we have presented to you, to the Selectmen tonight, our, the packet for the tax classification hearing for FY '20. And like every year, I'd like to go through it if I could, just a basic understanding. Something I want to mention, if you look on the page two, I guess it is, it has the pie there, the pie chart. Something I bring up every year, and it's certainly worth talking about for a second. The pie chart here, as far as the Town of West Bridgewater is the key here, where Plymouth County, the city of Brockton's the only city in Plymouth County, so we obviously have the rest of it like us, our towns. The Town of West Bridgewater, because of the infrastructure, its location, proximity to highway, it's being adjacent to the city of Brockton and such, we're afforded a good commercial-industrial tax base. And by that, I mean, if you look at the, on the pie chart below it, it gives you the breakdown of the percentage of properties, and if you add up the commercial, industrial, and personal property, it's a little over 30%. The Department of Revenue says, in order to classify, in other words, take some of the residential tax money and put that burden onto the commercial and industrial people, your base for that commercial-industrial personal property should be somewhere around 22 or 23%. And like I just mentioned, we're at about 30%. So we're afforded to say, okay, let's take part of our residential, part of the tax burden and put it onto the commercial properties. And you guys have done a good job in the past of, you know, keeping that to a minimum. Most towns in this area only have the single rate, so they're not afforded that luxury of doing that. So that's one thing worth mentioning, that the town here, like I said, because of the location and such, we can do that. And I do mention that every year. I'm sorry if, you know, if it's redundant, but it's worth mentioning. The next page, it just shows the breakdown of valuation by class from 2015 to 2000, the current year, 2020. And at the bottom of the page, just a pie chart or a graph chart, I'm sorry to match that up. The, the, on the, on the bottom line, where it says total valuation, that's just, you know, worth, just looking at for a second. You can see from, you know, the value, in 2015, went from a little over a billion, 10,000, up to 2020, where our little community here, with not a lot of taxable parcels and such, we're approaching a billion three. So again, a strong real estate market, when the market starts to go south, we, you know, more, 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 more or less hold our own regarding, you know, values up and down. So our little community, I'm saying by, you know, FY '21, '22 will be exceeding a billion three, where not long ago, when I started way back when we were less than a billion dollars. So that's, you know, again, that, that's a relationship to what the town and the real estate market is doing. The next page, it has, it has the three, three lines regarding the, the top line, the shaded in blue was the residential parcels. In the middle, the pink is the commercial, and the yellow is industrial. If you look over, say, okay, if you look over the, in 2020, it shows the residential, that is just, on 2020, the top line residential, 2020, it's 752,158. That is just for single-family homes. And you can see from the previous year, it's gone up, you know, from 732. We do that, John puts it together this way, just so we can get, on the bottom blue line, it says 357,830. That way, we can compute the average assessed value of a single-family home here in West Bridgewater. And it's interesting that, if you look at 2020, on the, on the bottom blue line there, it says 357,830. And the value change from 2019 was only 2.4%. If you looked, you know, from 18, 19 going back, there was 7%, 6%, you know, 4%. You can see the markets starting to slightly shift the other way. And I'd be willing to bet, in a few years maybe, when it, when it goes a little further south, our little community here won't be hurt too much by that, you know, dip in the values. I'm not saying they won't depreciate, but not as much as like the Brocktons or the Fall Rivers and such. But I found, I looked, I was looking at this, I found an interest in that. The change from, from 17 to 18 was 6.9%, and now from 19 to 20, it's only, it's 2.5%. So you can see that the average assessed home, while it has increased, it hasn't kept up to the, the previous few years. And then we have the same thing for the commercial and industrial properties. The commercial, the average assessed value, the bottom pink line is 987,499, you know, we're up a little over 1%. Industrial, you know, again, we don't have the parcel count, you can see on line two, it has the parcel count, each, each section on line two is a parcel count, and we only have 105 parcels. And these are not, these are not all industrial parcels, these are only improved parcels and improved commercial, I should have mentioned that, just so we can get the average bill. So, you know, there's a lot more industrial, you know, vacant lots, buildable, non-buildable, classification, you know, classified land, these are just the improved parcels. So you can see with the small count, the, you know, the increases, it hasn't been all The next page is the one that the Board will be interested in regarding trying to set the tax rates for FY '20 for the Town of West Bridgewater tonight. On the, if we concentrate for a second on the blue highlighted columns, you can see in the top left, it has the average value that we talked about a second ago on the previous page of 357,830. And then down, if you would, at the bottom of the blue highlight, it has the FY '19, the average bill, and the tax rate. This allows us to say, at each, at each percentage on the CIP shift, it allows us to say what the bill's gonna do for FY '20. So for example, on the residential properties, I think last year your split was 138, if I do believe. The potential bill this year at that split would be 59, if you follow with me in the blue, get out to 1.38. To the right of that, it says potential bill of 59,57, 5,957,87. The rate would be 1665 for the residential. The, the change in the rate would be less than 1%. And tax dollars at that split, the change from FY '19 to FY '20 would be almost 189, almost $190. And then, so when you pick what you're gonna do with that split, Selectmen, that's how, you know, obviously you look at the shift you want and see what the result's gonna be for that property taxation. For the commercial property of 138, the potential bill is 27,501, the rate would be 2785, if I fall along, and the increase in dollars would be 450. In industrial, under the same line object, the potential bill at 138 is 38,810, the rate again, same as the commercial, 2065, and the increase would be 551,99. So the, the blue, the red, and the yellow columns just differentiate the three classes of properties. And then the next sheets are the proposed, it gives you just a little better in-depth look at the, at the different splits for the residential and, and back page for the commercial-industrial.
Steve, is 1.5 the max split, or is that just what we happen to go up to on the spreadsheet? Is there a max?
Yeah, there is. If you, in the past, if you've used, if you've gone, like say, the city of Boston, if you go into the one and a half, then you can, you can petition to go to 175.
There's a local adoption to go beyond 1.5, but if the community has not adopted a local adoption, it's 1.5.
Right. And to locally adopt that, do you have to go to the 1.5 first, or can you go, can you, if you adopt it, you can shoot by that? I thought you had to adopt that before, I mean, I thought you had to use the 1.5.
I think you can adopt it in advance.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I know the city of Boston, right away, back in the day, they went right past it, because, you know, of their levy problems. But the cap is, Selectmen, at 1.75, if you locally adopt it.
Thank you.
I know that increase of 3.28 is a lot. I mean, you would increase the valuation of the, of the property. I would like to maybe suggest 1.39. Now you see a 73% increase, a change from 2019. You drop down to the 1.39, it's 12%. And I look all across the board there, and even the, you know, even the industrial and the commercial. That's what I like to see it set up. I don't know what my other colleagues would like to do there, because the 3.28 is, is a big increase. And especially where the houses in this town now are really escalating in the projects.
So...
And you went up a two-point thing on the, on the valuation?
Yeah, and I mentioned the year before, we went up 7% because the market was a lot better.
You know anything I missed in the last two years? We used to have a booklet, so I know what everybody paid. The last two years, we never got the booklet, is it a...
No, we shouldn't, I mean...
Yeah, I would like in the future that we can have a book, so I can, I used to go down every single thing and see what, what people actually do pay.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We can, we can place those in the, you know, in the libraries of...
Appreciate that.
Yeah, whatever, right?
To know that, you know?
Yeah.
But that's how I feel about it.
I apologize about that. I thought, okay, that could definitely be done, Selectmen, sure.
Yeah, that's what I feel about it, and hear from Mayor and associate.
So I am down at 1.42 split. That would be...
When you're down to the same, okay, all right.
At a 1.42 split, the dollar change for the, and correct me if I'm wrong anywhere, Steve.
Yep.
For an average residential home valued at 357,830, or assessed at that amount, they would incur a $53 increase in their taxes.
That would be correct, at the 1.42, correct, yep.
And I realize that puts a, about a $1,250 burden on a commercial business.
Yes.
But we've been talking about an economy that's doing well, and those impacted most during this economy doing well are the businesses. They're bringing in, hopefully bringing in more revenue, whereas the residents are probably not. They're not feeling that in their paycheck, and certainly the residents living on a fixed income aren't feeling a significant increase in their income.
The only thing, and that's, you know, can I just point out one, and that's good to point out, is the fact that I was concerned in talking to Dave and then John, we found out, and I don't know if, it's certainly a little piece of the pie, but I found it that the growth wasn't, you know, I said to John, how much does she have, 600,000, and, you know, we're down to 440, and a lot of that's 100 grand's personal property. And I'm finding, I sit on the TIF committee, and we haven't done, we haven't gone after that stuff, so I see our commercial growth, there hasn't been, you know, any new real major activity in commercial growth. And believe me, it's not because, you know, we can't afford the rate, that's for sure not, but that might be a little part of it, you know? That thing they're building in Bridgewater, you know, that building you've seen out in Elm Street, over the line there, that thing could probably build a new elementary school the size of that thing. That's a shot in the arm for the community, would be something like that. And again, I talked about, you know, we're on, we haven't had a TIF since the chair pack thing, and that's, that's a real good program to go forward on. So just in talking, what you're saying, I agree with all that, it's just that we haven't had a lot of commercial growth. And again, it's not gonna really probably prohibit somebody from coming in, but they certainly would take a look at that, you know?
So where are we with our commercial rate compared to, say, a Bridgewater?
Well, they don't have, Bridgewater is not classified, so they have the one rate.
They have the one rate.
Bridgewater, that's what I was saying, you know, yeah.
So they're putting a large burden on the residents.
Yes, yeah, right. That's why we're, we're, you know, we're sitting in a good position where, residentially speaking, because of that good commercial-industrial base, in the industrial parks, that we can pass some of that burden onto the commercial guy. Most of these towns, you know, in Plymouth County, don't have that luxury.
Just in response to your remarks, I did some analysis, not included in this packet, but I tried to track the last three fiscal years of the commercial rates, and I, as closely as I could approximate them, they would fall between the 1.38 and the 1.42. In other words, 1.38, the fiscal '19 rate...
Commercial, I talk about?
Commercial-industrial, yeah.
Yep.
Would be 2765. And at 1.42, that would reflect the fiscal '17 commercial rate, close to it. It was 2868. And in fiscal '17, the 1.41 would be closest to the commercial rate at 28. It was 2858, that reflects 2846 here. So I think between the 1.3 and the 1.42 is...
It's a good range.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, I know that businesses can regulate, you know, and go up in their prices, but the homeowner there that's sitting a fixed income is, you know, needs all they can get, you know, and the valuations and everything goes. And I certainly would, would go lower. Dave, I think you explained to me exactly if we go too low in, in the future years, would you, would you explain that too also to my Board?
Sure. So again, it's all philosophy. Based on my training in the past, is that during good economic times, you do not want to increase the split more on businesses. And the reason being is, is that when economic times slow down, businesses stay, and residents sometimes lose their, their jobs. And so what you do is, is that you want to then move closer to, down to the 1, so that way you can put more of the onus on the commercial as opposed to on the business when things are not going as well as they should be going. Very rarely do companies go out of business. They do. But residents lose their jobs during economic downtimes. And so as a result, when we have a good economy like we do now, the typical train of thought is that you would keep it where it is, or you would actually shift from 138 closer to 1, not advocating that. But that's the general thought process, is that you would stay where you are at, and therefore, you would not pass more onto the businesses. And then if the economy soured, you would put more onus on the business and less on the resident. And the concern that I have is, is that if we went to say 142 has been proposed, you don't have that much more room between 142 and 150 at a later date if the economy starts to sour. You start to really lose any of that flexibility. Now, they are right. My understanding is, is that you have to be at 1.5 before you can then do a local option at town meeting in order to make a shift. But understand, town meeting is usually in June, you're sitting here in November, you're trying to set a tax rate, you're at 1.5, you have nowhere else to move, you're stuck. So my recommendation would still be to remain at the 138, and I could try to further, better explain that if I wasn't clear.
I'm still at 142. And anyway, I appreciate the explanation, but I'm still, I think, stuck on that people, while the economy may be doing well, the taxpayers aren't doing as well as others may be. And everyone who's working was just recently incurred a new tax for the Paid Family Leave Act. And while it might not seem a lot, it was an impact on the working class. And I just think I stick with my 1.42. I feel confident in...
Angela, you got any comments?
I'm with, well, with David's philosophy. I think that we're getting, if we keep moving down with John, and I think the past couple of years, I think last year we might have moved from 1.6, 1.36 to 1.38, I believe. And if we just, if we keep creeping down, when we really need it, we're gonna be at the cap. So that's my concern, like David said.
Well, that's why I kind of held up, up to there, and I'm very, very concerned about the, you know, the homeowners, who are really getting beat up. But I, I just want to do the right thing here. I was just kind of wondering, you want, what, 1.41?
1.42.
Oh, 42. How about if we split in the middle, we go 1.40?
I'd personally rather see it not, I mean, I'd honestly vote to go the other direction.
And I'm stuck at 1.42.
Well, I'm not, I'm not really subject to vote for the 1, 1.38, you know? It's gonna be below that, where my vote's gonna come in, you know? Because I, you know, I, you know, you had good points, and that's my point all along, you know, the residents, especially lately with the increase in the, in the homes in this town, you know, and it, and there's a lot of them, you know?
Right, and then, and let's face the fact, the only good part about your house being evaluated higher is if you're willing to sell. If you want to stay and live in it, it's not, it's not doing you any favors. And John did say, you said that, between 1.38, 1.42, we're in the range.
Oh, right.
Granted, the 1.42 is at the higher end, but we're still within the range.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be willing to go to 1.41.
Okay, somewhere in the middle, you know, I think that's what we should do, you know? I mean, we, we want our business to thrive also, but we want to take good care of our residents, you know? So we're in there.
And I think, just to, I'm sorry, David, just to make one more point, you know, when the residents are, and I know it's not a lot of money, but it is disposable income, and that disposable income is spent, hopefully, at the businesses.
So the only thing that I, I mean, obviously, the Board's gonna make whatever decision they want to make, I just want to make sure you have all the correct information, and I was remiss in not saying one thing I should have in an earlier, my earlier explanation, is that one, is that John is right, that if you look at over the last three or four years, our historical rate for industrial-commercial was closer to that 28 and change, and therefore closer to the, say, the 140 to 142. But if that argument is true and valid, then your residential rate over the last couple of years was 17 to 18, which means that you could easily, based on that same argument, drop down to 1.3. And all you have to do is flip the page previous, and you're gonna see that in 2015, it was 1781, 2016, it was 18, 2017, it was 1773, 18 was 1739. My point is, I would shy away from using that as the basis of the argument, because it only works if you want to be, if you, it works in the industrial, but then somebody could easily make the opposite argument on the residential as well. The one thing, other thing that I want to make is a point, again, just because I want to be fair to the person who trained me on this, is that although some businesses in town are mom and pops and therefore live in town, it is residents who vote and commercial that doesn't. And therefore, it is the business, I mean, it's the residents at town meeting that are setting the budget and voting, and it's the commercial that are now subject to that vote, just subject to that budget without a vote. So for us to say, we want to be careful about what their increase is, it is the residents who have voted for their increase, where commercial and industrial, on average, does not have the right to vote on that increase.
I just want to point out one thing, the, obviously, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, but in the conversation about looking back historically at, like, say, for example, the industrial rate going back a couple of years ago, you gotta remember that, if the rate's gonna be, that you pick is closer back to 17, that the assessed value on industrial properties was almost 200 grand less. So you talk about that rate, and I'm talking about the assessed value times the rate, the bottom line is the tax dollars, so you're not talking about the same assessed value at the same rate three or four years ago, you're talking about an assessment that's almost 200 grand less, for example, on the industrial properties.
If you remember, over the years, we tried to get it to all one tax rate. I mean, but, but then the split got so bad, we couldn't do it. See, that's, that's the thing, you know?
No, it'd be, really, with this, you know, with this commercial-industrial, with this makeup of the class of properties, you know, it just warrants some type of classification split.
We know it's a difficult decision.
Oh, I know it's a difficult decision, but you know, you want to try to do the, this thing, try to be fair with, with everybody, and you know, a town like that, oh, is there a motion to the contrary of...
I'll make a motion to use the 1.41 split rate.
All right, is there a seconded motion? Our second motion.
Albows in favor?
Alaws in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll oppose.
I'm gonna oppose, okay.
Just a couple of other issues. We, at this point, are required to inform you of the excess levy capacity. So for fiscal year '20, the excess levy capacity will be $2,134,872. And the excess levy capacity for fiscal '19 was $1,957,306.52. And I personally want to thank the staff of the Board of Selectmen for making a very last-minute change in these packets, and thank you very much, Lord.
You're welcome.
Really, we're doing this on the fly, and I do appreciate that. So the last item of business would be for you to sign the LA 5, which would state that the Chairman made this presentation to you, and you made a vote, and that you were informed of the excess capacity. And this year, the Department of Revenue has changed the rules. Last year, you authorized me to sign on your behalf. This year, you're required to sign electronically through the Gateway System. So the town clerk and I set up accounts in each one of your names with passwords, and I gave them to the town administrator. I'm kind of at the point where I really would like to submit the tax rate tonight if I could, but tomorrow or the, Friday at the latest. So if you could either give the town administrator your permission to sign electronically, or me, or if you'd like to walk through it, I'd be happy to walk you through it with the town administrator.
Just to say the clarification, John, could you just explain briefly what excess capacity means? Because people hear $2 million, and it sounds like, so do we have $2 million laying around?
No, it means you have $2 million, that you could tax the residents and the commercial and the industrial property owners of the Town of West Bridgewater. That's the maximum. So in other words, your levy is approximately $25,944,000. You could actually raise your levy, you could, you could appropriate more money up to You could, you could appropriate more money up to approximately $28 million. But you chose not to do that, because you're saving money for the town, for the taxpayers.
We got another public hearing coming up, so maybe we're gonna really help to go down and sign. Need the three of us to sign, or what's the best way to do it?
The choice, you can have the town administrator do it, or?
Yeah, I have the password information. I'll discuss it with each one of you individually afterwards, but, you know, we'll make sure it gets done. We'll make sure it gets done on behalf of all of you.
You'd like to get it signed tonight, okay?
Whatever, whatever you wanna do.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you, Stevie.
Okay. All right, we're a little bit late here.
Eldon, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you could close that tax hearing, please.
Motion to close the public hearing. Is it a second?
Oh, hold on, second, sorry.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay, pursuant to Chapter 140 of Master General Law, the public hearing will be held on Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, at 7:20. The Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall 65, North Main Street. West Bridgewater Mass, application for Class II Used Car Dealer's License for AA Lincoln Enterprises, Inc. To be located 279 East Center Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. Interested parties are invited to present and be present and to be heard. Board of Selectmen, F. Murray, Chairman. Motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's simple.
Yeah, yeah, name for, name for the record?
Well, I enjoyed the first conversation you had.
Yeah.
First, I had no idea what you were talking about, but then when you started talking about devaluations, Brockton and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's interesting.
West Bridgewater, I decided that I should pay attention.
Yeah, right.
I might be moving to this town.
Yeah.
Personally, myself.
Well, it's hard to do something like we do, but we can try to be fair with everybody. You wanna be fair with the business, but it's in the residents, and you gotta, you wanna be fair with both the business and the, and the residents. It's just kinda a hard thing to do.
Yeah, I know. Well, I was, I wasn't paying much attention to it until you started talking about, and then I knew what you were talking about. So, it's like, you started talking about tax.
Do you live in Easton? You live in Easton?
No, I live in Brockton.
Okay.
But I was, I lived in West Bridgewater, across from the Yangtze, till I was about five years old.
Okay.
Then I moved to Bridgewater, and now I'm in Brockton. So, now I'm selling in the spring my home and coming back to this way. So, I was considering West Bridgewater.
Good.
But, so I was listening to your tax rates to find out where we're going.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's gotta be better than Brockton. So, we're all set?
Well, we asked you a few questions.
I thought you were all set.
We have to.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I thought you said you.
No, no.
You ready to leave? I'm gonna leave.
Anthony, good to meet you.
I know you.
You're a man.
Yeah, okay.
I thought you said you're already settled.
Denise Race, nice to meet you.
Pleasure.
So, just exactly what you're gonna do up there.
What am I gonna do?
Yeah.
Well, probably for the.
How many cars, and, you know, hours of operation, and that kinda stuff.
Well, I'm going to probably stock probably 25, 30 cars. I've been at my location now for 36 years, and that's, that's my program. I don't run with 100 cars, but I, I run with 25 of the nicest, usually three-year-old off-lease, and some, some of the older. But I'm selling that property, and I figure I'm a 68, so maybe I should unload it now while I still can. And I'm gonna go down here, I've known Mark and those people at K&amp;B for past 10 years or so. They service all my cars. So, they wanna learn the business.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna go in there. My hours of operation are gonna be Monday through Thursday, from 8 to 6, 7, probably 7 o'clock. In the winter, I might close at 6, truly. But Thursday and Friday, on Friday and Saturday, I'm there till 5 o'clock. And by appointment on Sunday.
Should we ask for anything, you know, involving cars, you know? I know, are you gonna be doing any repairs there, or?
No, K&amp;B will be doing all my repairs.
They're gonna do repairs, so there won't be any. And that's where, that's where we get.
I'm not mechanically.
You know, problem with the, with the rubber that gets, because it gets pats, you know? That's, that's our biggest problem, you know?
I don't wanna do that. I simply give them the cars, and they go through everything.
So, Denise, you got any questions, this gentleman?
No, I don't.
Oh, he certainly knows the business. He's been around for years.
Little while.
Yeah.
No, no questions.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the application for a Class II Used Car Dealer's License for AA Lincoln.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're there.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice day.
Appreciate it, you too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Good luck.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Ellen.
Yeah, good luck, good luck to see you again.
Thank you. Maybe you'll come down and see me sometime.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will, yeah.
Well, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too. So, I'll have the license ready for you tomorrow.
All right, good, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right. Act on the Burke Voice Foundation requests to sell Christmas trees and wreaths.
Mr. Chairman, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Oh, we gotta have, close the, close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to appointments. Act on the Burke Foundation requests to sell Christmas trees and wreaths, November 30th, December 21st, 2019. They've done this for years, we haven't had any problem.
Motion to approve and waive the fee.
Second.
All right, alls in favor? Aye. So, vote to ratify non-union personnel contract with Lana Carroll. Is it a motion?
Motion to approve the contract.
Is there a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Review proposed scheduled meeting and important dates for the first half of the calendar, 2020. These are subject to change, if for some reason we have to change, you know? But that's kind of a guideline.
Yep, so just the only thing that I wanna mention as an offshoot of what the chairman stated is that we listed all the applicable dates as we normally do, first and third Wednesdays of every month. However, you'll see that based on our historical schedule, it is showing June 1st as a tentative town meeting date. We are in the process, based on the vote, the board, the vote the board took last meeting, of, we have a survey, and we're attempting to solicit information whether people would prefer a May meeting over a June meeting, and also 6 versus 7 o'clock. So, right now, I would ask you to approve the dates with the caveat that we may be changing that date, because I've not actually, actually, vote on the town meeting date yet. I'll be doing that at a later date.
Okay, is there a motion at effect?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Approve minutes of October 16th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye. So, vote accept me, meeting minutes of November 6th, 2019, review.
Motion to accept minutes for review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, alls in favor?
Aye.
So, vote, vote on vacation, carryover, request of Tammy Hood and Maureen Adams.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Petition civil service vacancy for full-time police officer. Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is that, David, that's a new, is that gonna be a new position, or?
Yeah, so you did last time, there was a, a position had been vacant. So, last hire, we placed that person.
Yeah.
At town meeting this past year, we secured funding for one additional officer. So, asking for this would be, would fill that, that position.
Okay. Any other question? All right, you have a motion at effect?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so vote to ratify, M.O., fire union contract.
So, that's a motion of understanding?
Memory.
A memo, thank you.
Memory of understanding, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I thought you were asking for a second. Did you make a motion?
I'm not gonna make a motion. No, I will, though.
All right, is there a second? Alls in favor? Aye, okay, so.
We're a little out of sync tonight.
Yeah, I know, so I'm motioning going in.
Let's feel the ring.
Mary Mather, Director of the Council Agent, requests amended senior work program.
So, every single year, I place in your packet, as an FYI, as to all these seniors in town that have taken advantage of the program. So, that information is in there. This year, there was an additional request, however, from the Council on Aging Director Marilyn Mather. We do not have income requirements or income guidelines. So, that means in theory, that somebody who has very low income and somebody who makes $5 million per year can take advantage of the program. The program is obviously designed to help those people most in need. So, following the process established by the state and what many other local towns do as well, the director is looking to impose income guidelines or requirements. So, her recommendation is, is to allow people up to $45,000 of single, $60,000 if married for annual income with assets not more than $100,000 excluding their primary resident. That is fairly consistent with what the state, I place in your packet, the state has their requirements at just a tad higher. However, the requirements that she's recommending is consistent with three local towns. And you'll see that there's another town that answered the survey that is much lower. So, it is your choice. One thing I will let you know is this is a Board of Selectmen policy. So, if you vote on what you would like to do tonight, and three weeks later, or three months later, or two years later, you wanna amend this, you can amend it at your leisure.
Do you happen to know that means that any of the ones who have been doing it for a number of years would no longer be eligible?
That is correct. There are a handful of people that wouldn't, that well exceed these income requirements.
But if it, if there were residents that were not able to meet the guidelines and therefore didn't qualify, but Marilyn had the money in the budget to spend, we could have a meeting revise this, and she could hire them on.
Or make it a preference, preference to lower income.
Can we make it a preference versus a guideline?
It's your policy, so if you wanna say preference. I don't know exactly how she collects the information, so I didn't ask that word.
She's got people that have been on there for years now, and.
She does, but she also has a lot of people who are trying to be on there, that because, and they can't, and those people, look, I don't wanna spend somebody else's money. The people who have more money are looking to be, or take advantage of the program, and that's great for them, and I still have no objection to that. But there are some people out there that really have much lower income ability, and they are, for lack of a better term, being shut out. It's a first-come, first-served, and obviously, the people who have done the program year after year after year, they normally know when to fill it out, when to come in, when to do, a little bit quicker than the normal person, and so they get first dibs based on that. And I understand we might wanna say, well, let's change some of that, but you can't not spend the money and wait until, say, May, and hope that more people come in. So, I think the first-come, first-served process makes sense. I think it would be difficult to administer if it was preference, but that doesn't mean we can't give it a shot, because as the board noted earlier, is that if you wanna make a change a month or two later, you can do that.
So, and Marilyn recommended the $45,000, $60,000 guideline.
So, applications are not due at the same time?
Nope, they are. They will all become, they become available either on December 1st or January 1st, 'cause the program runs until November 30th. So, if a handful of people fill it out in December, and then we slot them, somebody that comes in and say February, they would be shut out at that point. So, if somebody that exceeds these limits comes in in January, and somebody that does not exceed the limits doesn't come in till March, the preference wouldn't be helpful, because we've already slotted those individuals.
So, I'd like to make a motion to implement the income guidelines for the senior work-off program at $45,000 for individual and $60,000 for married.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
And the only thing I would amend is just to say that basically, as proposed, because this, we didn't refer to the assets, but the assets are in here as well, unless you're looking to delete that portion of it.
The assets?
Yeah, because Marilyn is making three recommendations. Income limit of $45,000 of single, married of $60,000.
Okay.
Or assets not including your primary residence of no more than $100,000.
I mean, the, the income is fairly easy to understand. You can ask for W-2, you can ask for a tax return. Assets outside of your personal residence, how are we going to quantify that? Anyone can pick a number.
Sure, you just see, you see, you do, you make a best faith, good faith effort. They fill out the, they fill out the application, and they already list a lot of this information anyway. So, that's why we know whether somebody is in a, in a better situation than not. So, if, look, if somebody decides to fill it out and not be truthful, we can't do anything about it. But we make a good faith effort to gather the information and hope that the people that are providing it to us are being honest.
Seems very low.
Okay, that's a motion, and ask?
So, is it, it's and, or? You have to qualify under both criteria?
Yep, as proposed, it is and.
Okay. And I would amend my motion to include the asset qualifications, too.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Okay, correspondent, publisher, chairman of course of action, public comments? Anybody got any comments out there? Okay, I just got something that I wanna bring up at this time. You know, the West Bridgewater football team, the high school, they won the sectional championship last Friday at 35 to 12 over South Shore Tech. And they were undefeated, and they also, they won it last year also, and they went to the tech tourney, and they went as far as the semifinals. I hope this year, they'll be looking for the state crown. So, I'd be like to send a lot of congratulations and wish them the best on the state tourney.
Do we need a motion to send a letter? I'll make a motion to send a letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's a great honor, and a great football team. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Okay, anything else on, on the public comments? Town administrator's report, David.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I have a handful of FYIs for the board. First is in reference to the fiscal year 2020 net school spending. It's a requirement of state law on an annual basis. I put this form together, and basically, what it does is, consistent with the information the state is looking for, is that we determine as to whether or not we're meeting our constitutional duty to provide adequate funding for our local school department. You'll see on page, is it on page two? There it is. On page two, lower right-hand side, you'll see the FY 2020 net school spending minimum is $11.5 million. And according to the formula they have provided to us, the town of West Bridgewater for fiscal year 2020 has approved $15.3 million. So, we're almost $4 million in excess, or about 32.5% over.
So we're almost $4 million in excess, or about 32 and a half percent over. So many very well-run, well, good school districts are 30 percent over. The formula is certainly out of date. It's dated back to 1993. And so there has been a push at the state level to amend this formula, because obviously, anytime you're 32 percent over, there's got to be something wrong. In any event, I forwarded this depart, this over to the school department as a requirement of the law, and we have forwarded over to the state of Massachusetts for their information as well. Next on my agenda, on the agenda is Comcast Internet Essentials. They have expanded their low-income housing program, which is obviously good news. They claim that it will allow about 3 million more Americans to be able to participate. In essence, they have lowered their income guidelines, and as a result, if you qualify for the program, they will allow those people then to get high-speed internet access for only $10 a month, and they will directly sell a laptop for $150. The intent is, is to allow as many seniors as possible to be able to get online and access online. If somebody is interested in the program, we will post the information on the website and also place it on our Facebook page. However, I will let people know, you can call the phone number of 855-846-8376. Speak directly to Comcast, and they will be able to provide you the information that you need. Really good news from Southeast Regional, they have expanded their carpentry program. As a result, I will be forwarding the information out to all of our department heads. They are looking for small projects throughout municipalities, so that way their students can gain firsthand experience and also help out their member communities. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know how expansive the program, my guess is they won't build us a school. But, but they're, you know, it's, think about 15, 16, 17-year-old students looking to be able to learn how to be a carpenter. So I'll, I'll send the information out, but I think it's great that they are reaching out to us and are looking to help, because then we would just pay for the materials. And the last is, is survey stipend for elected officials. This was one of the goals that I was provided from Mr., from the chairman, and so I've provided in your packet a stipend for nine peer communities in local communities, as well as to what we pay our elected officials. This came as a result that the board made a promise to one of our elected boards during budget season last year, that we would gather and look at the information, because that board member was wondering as to whether or not they, they should be making changes as to what West Bridgewater pays. So I'm just providing the information. Come budget season, then you can, you know, we can either make amendments to it or not make amendments, but at least you have the data that will hopefully guide you in that decision. And that is my report.
Okay, anything else the board would like to bring up at this time?
No, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alows in favor? Thank you. Ben, got a new helper? Anybody else out here?